Start to pledge allegiance to all my friends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful day and this beautiful time of year, which is upon us. We're grateful for the many things which we have and the blessings and the health that we have. We're grateful for the opportunities which we have to serve in this community and here on the school, school board. And we ask as we go throughout this meeting and this agenda that we will be able to do those things and discuss the things that would be pleasing unto thee. We ask you to please bless those that are that are in need, bless us that we may be able to recognize those needs and that we may help. We ask you to please help our teachers and our administrators to to always be able to help these kids in any way that they are able to. We ask you to please bless this meeting. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Future board meetings, September 24th, August 8th, October 8th, backwards, and November 12th. So there's only one in October. All here six o'clock. Uh revisions to the agenda. I think there's some HR that were revised and maybe one donation revision. Public recognition. We have a recommendation to approve $2,800 donation from Thorn Insurance Agency for all of the MHS students to have athletic pass. And we'll just follow that with the one from South. We have a recommendation to approve a $2,800 donation from Complete Glass Solutions for all of the SHS students to have an athletic pass. Also have a, I was going to get that.
I'm going to approve this.
Second, and we've got a motion of second to approve these donations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed. And we definitely like to thank those two businesses in our area for that generous donation. I know the athletic directors definitely appreciate that. Number three, a recommendation to approve a $50 donation from Happy Homemakers for Shark Creek Elementary student Malcolm Lunch Program. And we'll just, now, also a recommendation to approve a $120 donation of Walmart gift cards from the class of 1979 for the Northfield guidance department.
We'll move to accept those donations.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the $50 donation from Happy Homemakers and a $120 donation from the class of 1979. I assume that's the class of 1979.
You never know.
Never. All those in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed? Alright, passes. School recognition.
Alright, I just have a couple. One is, um, just, I just received an email, so I'll go back to that one after I do this one. So Mr. Snyder shared this one, Northfield volleyball received an exemplary behavior report after a fifth set, 16-14 with Huntington North on Thursday, 8-19-24. Official Michael Leach reported that there was a good crowd that was playfully engaged. They're actually playfully. Players and coaches from both teams played hard and coached their teams up. It was a pleasure to work the contest. So it's always great to see those. And I also just received one too. This is just in, uh, wasn't on my list, but I just received the email. Uh, this is from Mrs. Lewis at Southwood. Recently, the varsity football team played, our varsity team at Northwestern High School. And let me start by saying this is a Northwestern parent, not a, um, an official. I just wanted to send an email saying I watched Northwestern score a touchdown against Southwood. And on the same play, number one on Southwood's team helped a Northwestern player fix his shoulder pads that he was struggling with as, as he came out, as it came out of his jersey. Such a nice gesture and great composure in the heat of the moment. It was very kind and thoughtful of him. I just thought I would share his kindness. It was appreciated. And number one is Emery Bo Lick. So it's very nice to see things like that happen because, you know, when you just get scored on, you don't always think about helping your teammate, or not the teammate, but that's what it is.
Take it away.
So anyway, those are the two that I have tonight.
Alright, no presentations, so public comments on items only. But we will move on. You have a motion of second to approve our regular meeting minutes, uh, August 27th.
So.
A motion of second to approve those minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Being opposed. Uh, move on to financial reports. We've got claims. Questions on claims for the end of the month. We've got payroll four and 4A.
Yeah, those should have been together. We had a timesheet issue, so we had her on a separate payroll to get that paid out. So 4A and 4 are together.
Same week.
Yes.
Question there?
Um, claims and payroll.
Okay, we've got a motion of second. All those in favor of claims and payroll four and 4A? Say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed? Alright. Uh, budget review, 2025.
Yeah, so this will be kind of our last phase of reviewing the 2025 budget. So that at the next board meeting, we would have a budget hearing. And then the following board meeting after that, we would have our budget adoption, which would then allow me to submit everything to the DLGF and meet all of our timeframes that are required by statute. So with this, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about, um, our Form Four and Form Three advertisements, which relate to, uh, tax rates. So we don't need to go through every page on this. A lot of this is the same things we've discussed in the past. Taxes are controlled by assessed valuations. Assessed valuations can help determine tax rates. Levies also help determine tax rates. That's the amount of monies that you would be requesting. And so they kind of all work on a fixed ladder there where, you know, AV increases, rate decreases, and vice versa, uh, when that comes in. So when we look at what those upcoming rates are going to look like for 2025, one of the things that we want to know is what our assessed valuation is going to be. Uh, we don't always know 100% of what, what that is. So we look historically at what some of those net assessed valuations have been. Uh, we know that they have been increasing over the last, uh, three years, three, four years, at a pretty significant rate. So when we look at that, uh, back when we were working on the referendum, we had policy analysts coming and give us a forecast of what assessed values might look like in the future. The red was their forecast and the blue is what is actually been happening, uh, with our, with our district. So you can see that it has increased sooner than what was expected. This is a look at what those tax rates have been over the past 13 years. You can see, uh, how those are broken up into different funds and how those funds were changed back in 2019. As far as where that puts us from a state perspective, that puts us around the median rate of where we stand now. So one thing I wanted to look at, which we haven't done this before, but I just thought it would be interesting to look at, as we prepare for, or not us, but as we prepare for the 2025 budget, the legislators are also preparing for their biannual budgets, uh, coming this spring. And so one of the things that has been a topic of discussion is property taxes. And so I went back to our DLGF website and made some graphs of, of some different information. Mike, keep it there for a second, please. I'm in a hurry.
I heard graphs.
Uh, just some things to understand and changes of how our property taxes have, uh, changed from a state perspective. Uh, this goes back to 1984. Uh, so back then, we had a general tax levy, which funded our general fund. We had a tax levy for debt and we had a tax levy for capital projects. That made up our total tax rates back then. Those stayed the same until 2001. They added bus replacement. In 2004, they added pension debt. In 2009, they removed the general fund tax levy. In 2018 is when we actually paid off our pension debt, uh, so that no longer exists for us. And then in 2019 is when they created the operation levy, which basically removed the capital projects and bus replacement levies and combined them together. So right now, currently, our only tax levies are related to operations fund and debt service. You may change the slide. So, uh, one thing I looked up was just what has been our levy history? So these would be the property tax dollars that we have collected from the school corporation side since 1984. And so you can, I mean, you can make your own interpretations in there. The interesting thing about this that I came up with was that in 2009, when the general fund tax levy was removed, that dropped our tax, uh, dollars down to 1991 levels. And so, uh, that adjusted over the course of the years to where we got to 2023. And if you look at where we were at in 2023, that's still actually at 2001 levels. And so you're working with monies in your, uh, operations and debt service at 2001 levels in today's market. And so, uh, that can cause some issues, uh, as far as getting certain things done, et cetera, with that. So that's just a little bit of, of history, uh, where that is. Uh, this is a look at total tax rate history. Uh, I mean, back in the early 2000s, tax rates were over $4. Obviously, assessed valuations were a lot lower back then as well. But we've maintained a fairly steady tax rate over the last, uh, 14, 15 years when it comes to total tax revenue. From an operational standpoint, um, that shows you what are operations. So this would be the dollars that fund operations accounts and funds. Uh, where that has gone from, um, over the years. And then the next slide is the debt service. And so it shows kind of where our borrowing rates have been, uh, over those years as well. So just a little perspective, uh, from that, from a historical standpoint. This is how we compare it to our peers. Uh, those would be our bordering districts for 2024. So again, going back, currently, debt service and operation funds are what's supported by our local tax dollars. So we look at net assessed valuations. We look at what we call tax caps. Tax caps went into effect in 2010. Those are in state statute. Ours have increased over the years, so more people are reaching their tax caps, which then means those are dollars that we do not capture, uh, in, in those taxed funds. And then tip districts, those work a little bit differently. Uh, there are three districts that are part of our school corporation. Uh, those are just assessed valuations that we don't capture, uh, as part of our total assessed valuation. So the goal is to advertise a high rate and a high levy to ensure we can collect the full amount of levy uh, for the budget that we need, uh, for that current year, so for 2025. So we're going to use a lower assessed valuation than what we anticipate, uh, for what our known levy is that we're going to ask for. Uh, we factor in any potential tax cap losses into that. We keep in mind any max levy funds. So like for debt service, there's not a max. However, there are situations that control the amounts of monies that you can borrow from a debt service perspective. So like anything above or below 39 cents is for approval. Anything between 40 and 79 cents is board approval, but it could go to a remonstrance. And then anything over 80 cents is a refund, which takes place. Uh, so this year, uh, for 2025, our operation fund max levy is at $5 million. Right? The previous year is at 4.8 million dollars. Now, one thing to understand about that, so for 2024, we were anticipating a collecting 4.8 million dollars. However, we had about a $150,000 tax cap loss. So we're not going to collect all that money. We're going to collect more around 4.6 million dollars. Well, with our new max levy of $5 million, we have a $360,000 cap cap loss, which means we're going to be around that 5.6 million dollars again. So or 4.6 million dollars again. So we're not really going to see a big increase in tax dollars when it comes to that operations fund. So that's controlled a little bit as far as that growth of the max levy by state law. They used to follow this formula. They still do. However, there's new law that caps it at 4%. So it can only have no more than a 4% growth. Even though we could have captured maybe over a 5% growth, state law, uh, caps it at only a 4% growth. So that's why it's at that $5 million. One thing to keep in mind, again, we talked a little bit about this in the past as well, is the tax levy dollars that we get in our operations fund does not fully support our operation fund. And so in a few examples here for '21, '22, and '23, that revenue, the R is the actual property tax dollars that we received for that year. The E is the expenses. So those were the actual expenses in that fund for that year. So you see that there's always a gap there. So how do we control that gap? We have a couple of different avenues of doing that. Transferring money from education to operations fund, which we do, but that also has a 15% cap. So we can't transfer more than that dollars. And for bigger things, bigger projects, we do that through borrowing to those things. Uh, we're looking at doing, um, a bond for 2024, which we've already went through all that process. We're looking at closing here in the next week or so, uh, to receive those dollars in October for the, uh, 2024 projects, which would be the Northfield Elementary Edition and Metro North Edition. So that's a little bit of where the interest rates lie, uh, for that. As far as what we're advertising, uh, for the 2025 budget, that is over on the right-hand column there. Uh, I put in, in those first two columns, what we advertise in 2024 and what the actuals were for 2024 to give you a little bit of perspective. Uh, so what we're advertising in 2025 is not what it's actually going to be. That was, is being reflected in the estimated column there. Again, at that dollar 10 rate, but we are going to be advertising, um, a tax rate of $1.49 for those two funds. With that, uh, the only thing I'm asking for is our ability to advertise the Form Three, uh, which would include this information as well as, uh, information related to when our bond hearing is and when our, for bond hearing, our budget hearing is and our budget adoption is.
Clarification, I guess, please. When you ask for that tax rate, knowing you're not going to get it, it's a DLGF that cuts that back. And for more, it faces to cut that back. I've always wanted to meet these folks, I think, but.
Well, they'll factor in what our budget estimates are. They'll factor in what our budget, uh, estimates are on revenue as well to make sure that our revenue, what we're estimating is going to support what our estimated expenses are. And then from the tax rate perspective, obviously, the operation fund has a max levy, so you can't go above that max levy anyway. I mean, we could ask for $10 million in our operations fund. They're going to cut it back to the max levy, uh, for that anyway. So that's kind of how that works.
So do they kind of know we want to end up or land around $1.10?
Yeah.
So they know that goal here.
Yep. And if it doesn't come back, then we can send them back and make adjustments to get it up to that level. As long as assessed valuation is
Able to carry it.
Able to carry it.
Alright, we need a, you have a motion of second for that recommendation to approve the advertising Form Three.
So.
Second.
We have a motion of second to, uh, approve the advertising of Form Three gateway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed? Uh, financial summaries.
Yeah, this is the end of the month for August. And where we sit was our front balances at this time. Nothing at the level of, uh, at this point.
Alright, uh, move on to personnel. Uh, employment, we have a Lori Cisco, subteacher at all schools. Valerie Dowdell, a subteacher for all schools. And Rex Reimer, subteacher for the North Schools. And Vienna Simpson, bus aide for special education bus. Have one leave, one eighty-two. Uh, leave will begin, uh, November 12th to January 6th of 2025. Pamela Poe, a teacher of visual impaired WMAP. Uh, she's retired at the end of this school year. And we have, uh, some robotics coaches. Mark Beal from Northfield Junior High School, Crystal Beal, Northfield Junior High School. Amber Bresman, Shark Creek Elementary, Kevin Bresman, Shark Creek Elementary. Ham Sadler, Southwood Elementary, Dan Wright, Southwood Junior Senior High. Jody Carr, Southwood Junior High. Jolene Shamin-
Shimenhour.
Shimenhour at Southwood Jun- Junior Senior High. Janet Moore, Metro North Elementary, Randy Collins, Southwood Elementary, and Joel Messler at Shark Creek Elementary. We have a motion of second to approve these.
So. Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the HR report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Being opposed? Alright, passes.
Can I just mention a couple of things for our retirement? So Pamela Poe, um, she basically started WMAP in 1991. Uh, she actually was a very professional. Uh, she was motivated and also had that passion of teaching students, so she went back to school to get her degree. And of course, being a teacher visually impaired, uh, for us. And just appreciate all that she's done over the last several years. So this will end almost 30 years of service, uh, with MSD at the end of this school year. So appreciate Pamela for all, all she's done and wish her well in retirement, but not until the end of this school year.
Alright, Heartland Career Center.
Oh, wait till we get down to business.
Okay. Superintendent reporter.
Yeah, I just want to mention we've been doing this about every time, but, um, of course, the locker room and weight rooms continue, uh, to be worked on. Tennis courts, there's a lot of it, um, going on there. Uh, actually, at, uh, Northfield, they do have the first layer down. I don't know about Southwood for sure because I haven't been there today. And then, of course, uh, the demo for the new bid construction, um, at North, as that's been completed. And of course, uh, bid phase three, uh, which is a, will be a lot of people. We're going to have a lot of people in here in this room, and that won't be until Friday now. Originally, it was going to be today, but it's going to be on Friday, so we're anxiously waiting for that to see how that all comes out. Uh, the digital signs, of course, you know those are completed. A lot of the, the work around there as far as the, uh, the dirt that was piled up and different things like that, that's all taken care of. Of course, the fence at Northfield. So just continue to have a lot of different projects going on. Appreciate all the people that are working on that to make all the improvements, and of course, continue for years to come now as we start these projects.
Alright, thank you. Tim, per instruction?
Yeah, I guess just a real quick mention about our PD day coming up Friday. So thankful to have the waivers so that teachers can really focus on that. And so they're going to knock out a lot of the state requiring trainings and a lot of school building trainings. And then talk about the new graduation pathways and how that might impact their course offerings. And for those of us old enough to remember, these used to be the old teacher workshop days that our teachers used to have. In a way, but they're not now, so really appreciative to have those days.
And I'll just jump on with that too. When you mentioned that, we saw a calendar, 1964, 65 calendar that had the old 175 days, but then in October, instead of having like a fall break, there was a teachers, if you remember that. All of you are old enough to remember that. Some of us are.
I didn't want to date myself. I was going to correct you and say, I don't know the Teachers Institute.
Yes, yes. So I dated myself. Teachers Institute, so there you go.
Alright, well, thank you, Tim. Under new business.
Yep, school approval.
Well, I will tell you, something's a little different this year with the Indiana Department of Education. There are different types of school improvement plans, uh, for different reasons. And so for this year, it is a difference that, uh, they're doing the CNAs. CNAs, did I say it right? Yeah, the CNAs. And, uh, Mr. McDivitt at White Junior Senior High School has, um, an improvement plan that's labeled as a CNA. And so, um, he's required to, well, actually to get your approval of that and then also to submit that to the DOE, uh, through a JOT form. And all of the rest of them, um, all the rest of the five schools actually won't do that until next year. Typically, they do that every year, uh, but for some reason, they changed that this year. And, um, Mr. McDivitt will be able to take the floor for all five, six schools tonight, so there's only one of them, so.
I'll still keep a brief.
So if you could share that and I
I will.
And I will, I will, uh, try to go as fast as you can because I, how many pages are there?
Well, I, six, I think.
How many?
Six.
Yeah, I just, I want to have.
We're not going to go through every page. Let me just say this, uh, Mr. K. Hibbert's right. We are a CNA status school, which means the way, the reason we got there was years ago, uh, our graduation rate was below 67%. So I was just doing some quick reading before, uh, the meeting started. the meeting started. Our graduation rate for this year is not officially set yet until October, but right now, we're at seventy-two percent. So if we have a second year of where we hit above that sixty-seven percent threshold, we will come off CNA status. So we have one year down, and we're going to keep working to make it two years in a row. Real quickly, I'll just say this about school improvement with Whites. In two thousand nineteen, a decision was made right before I think I arrived to give the bridge program, which is under the Whites' umbrella, distinct separate leadership. And so while I am technically the principal over all of that, Tony Boone has taken over the bridge part of that since two thousand nineteen, and I do think that decision is paying dividends in a lot of different ways. But I think, I think one of the things both Tony and I really work hard at is really two primary things. That is being laser focused on graduation, making sure what we're offering our students is exactly what they need. As the state has thrown new diplomas at us, and we have been, we have been hustling, it seems like, for the last five years to make those adjustments on the fly, and we're having to do it again. Which is fine, our staff is prepared for it, and our staff works hard at it, and so I think that is one thing that has really made a difference. I think the other thing that has made a big difference is that we continue, even though the population we work with is a student that is traditionally behind on credits and needs a lot of support. I think what both of our entities try to do, and I think do quite well, is establish as good of positive connections between the school and the home school and the student, which is tough to do in a virtual setting, it's tough to do in our setting, but I think those dividends do pay off. And so hopefully, next year, I'll come back, do this report again, because I will have to. And we'll be over that threshold again if we come off CNA status. So that's a quick rundown of what we've been doing. I'll be happy to take any questions and get that answered.
Well, we just appreciate Mrs. Boone, too, with like, like what you said, Mr. McDivitt, being able to work with all the students across the state of Indiana, and also the students that come to us from all across the state of Indiana residentially, so.
And I will, since it's an appropriate time to do this, it's great to see the school board at the Bridge Graduation Gym, which I will tell you, that is one of the coolest graduations I've ever been a part of. We have monthly graduations as necessary at Whites. And if you're, if you're around the Wabash area, at eleven o'clock, and you want to come out to the Whites Chapel, we have another graduation Thursday. We have four kids graduating, and it's really cool. So if you're able to make it, I know all of you are busy, but if you're in the neck, in that neck of the woods around eleven AM, we'd love to see you.
Thank you, Mr. McDivitt and Mrs. Boone. We do need a motion to approve that school improvement plan.
We do thank you guys for the work that you put in out there. We got a motion second to approve the school improvement plan at Whites.
Second.
Got a motion second to approve the improvement plan at Whites Junior Senior High School. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Now to NIPSCO project, Hartland-Currie Center.
Want to talk about that matter? Well, I'll say one thing, and then I'll let Matt go ahead a little bit more with it. Just as a reminder, that we have been charged with each school board of the five school boards to vote on this. So we put it on the agenda to tonight to vote on it. I don't know that you know better, do you want us to vote on it tonight, or there could still be some discussion, and.
We can. I don't think we're going to get much better at this point.
As, as you recall, it did go from the permanent value per acre, it went from like ten thousand was the starting point to twenty-five, I think, thousand. And I did show Mr. McWard some of the areas because they wanted to see what some other land values were, so obviously, we have technology, we can look on Deacon Snyder, I showed him where there's land that goes for more than that per acre, and so then that's what they settled on was the thirty-two-five. Here again, it's only one acre. It's only fifty percent of it, so.
How did they arrive at the fifty percent, like, does that affect more than just valuation?
Right.
I don't understand it.
Possibly because you would drive over the top of it.
What about the future yield damage, how is that, future yield damage down here where that line right there, is that like after construction, they consider?
I think they're trying to figure out if they start it now, or they're going to take out things. So the way they if they could go in right now.
Haven't they already cleared some of that?
No, they have.
They have not.
Not, not here. They may have from the east coming in. And that's what he explained, if they're certain on the east side, I mean, harvest possibly could be over before they even start on this section.
So future yield damages depending on timing of the project.
Yeah.
Is, is it acceptable to the tenant then?
I believe so, yeah. You did not contact me and say no, so.
And they were aware of all that.
Oh, yeah, we had, we brought them in and a couple of the neighbors, too, to present this stuff, to show them what, what possibly could be happening. Because I wanted their input as much as mine, because they're the ones that are going to be affected with tiles and stuff like that.
Well, the adjacent landowners that they're, or they're doing this agreement for, the numbers are about the same.
One of them asked me what we were getting, and I showed him this, he goes, oh, really? So he's going to have more discussions with this guy. I said, well, there you go.
Well, the harden probably is worth more, you know.
For the most part, yeah, yeah.
If you're only just on an acre valuation.
Yeah.
Basis.
So, you know, I shared that with them, too, so it's just public knowledge, so we're doing that, so. I'm okay with it, if you guys are, I mean, that's, we brought it to you.
I'm, I'm happy that they at least were willing to move those, that value up.
Well, let them know they're sorry, yeah.
To begin with was a no, there was a no gap.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm just still, you know, as long as there's no nothing there that says that, you know, you can't go across it with any other utilities, you said that was in there or was okay.
Yeah, they said it should be fine to do that, what they say.
Look back to the prepaid crop damage, I guess I understand that that's not between, that'd be the tenant, right?
The tenant, yeah.
And so we're not voting on that part, I mean, or we are.
I think that's all.
True, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I just put this page on, of course, there's a lot, there were four or five of the documents that I will drive, I put that on there just to add it. But this is the basic meat and potatoes of it, and you know, it's, it's four, four meter box that are good.
Yep.
To us, the community and so on.
I don't have a problem with vote, voting on it, we discussed it a few meetings.
Yep, I'll move to approve the agreement.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion second to approve the NIPSCO project agreement with Hartland-Currie Center. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we have.
This can maybe just be a discussion. And you want to.
You want to talk about that one?
Okay. I'll say something to it. Okay, which one are we going to look at first? Let's look at the first one that was brought by Ms. Sturch. She's wanting to change the way Hartland is, the board of managers has done. And her reasoning, as it says in there, please, we've had a hard time getting quarks from people, which is very disappointing, because you volunteer to be on this board, and then people don't show up, and you have to move the meeting, you got people coming, and it's just been very unhandy at times. Her idea was to have the superintendents be the board of managers, because they obviously meet once a month at Hartland at a different time. And the other problem we have run into is the building is needing work. And we've been working on a roof three or four years, and the prices just keep going up. Instead of being an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project, it's now like one point two million. Because we just can't get people to say, yeah, we're going to vote to do that, because we still have to come back to our boards to vote for that kind of money, get funding one way or another through taxes or whatever. And it would be nice to have the superintendents there who have better control or knowledge of what each school can do. And so her, her thought was to, let's have the superintendents do that, so we aren't angered up because Chris McWard meets with them, and he meets with us, to get conflicting stuff. I see advantages to that, because it's just one, it's streamlined some. The thing I dislike, I, I like being on that and having participation from our board members being there, that's okay. But with the amount of money that's going to have to be spent in the next few years for new controls, electricity, HVAC, if it takes as long as that, they'll have to use wood and skis to keep it hot. I just dislike the delay that's been there. That's this proposed. We've had another one proposed by Mr. Duiper from Manchester. He was adamant that we had to have board members there to do it. And he said, let's just make the superintendents be there at the same time the board members are. I said, that's cool. You're going to come at noon when the board superintendents come, you don't like that. But you have to consider that, what, how often do you want the superintendents to meet with them? It'd be just the one time, are we going to sit around with their educational part? I don't know. The other thing that's not included there that, okay, instead of having five people there, we're going to have ten, it's still one vote per school district. But if the board member is not there, they don't get the vote. Superintendent cannot vote. So what is the advantage of having two there if I can't vote as a school? So, you know, we don't have to vote on this tonight, this is just being thrown to us. I would like, we have our meeting at Hartland next week or whatever. I would like to talk to Mr. Duiper about superintendent. I mean, if we're going to have ten people there, let's have each school have one vote. I mean, just to have ten people there and do not show up, what did you gain?
I would, I would think, Matt, I'd be agreeing that the superintendent could vote in that instance.
He doesn't see it that way, because it does not say that anywhere. Each one of the board of managers there.
Well, I kind of like this hybrid, thank you, but then I hadn't thought about the timing of the board meetings. Typically, yours are in the evening then.
Six o'clock, just like that, yeah. Which is, you know, Mike would like to have another evening now. But at the same time, when you guys are doing your meetings during the day, I don't know what time you guys have that, but.
So I guess my question is, when you guys meet, do you talk about this stuff already?
Yeah.
So there already are meetings?
Yeah, they're talking about it.
So.
Not specifically on like voting, like we do in these kind of board meetings, because they do, they take care of the.
Payroll and.
Yeah, they take care of all that, we don't talk about that, we talk about the big projects, though. And there's more stuff.
So do you guys talk, do you guys talk about the details that he's saying that's not getting accomplished in those meetings? Like, how can it be funded?
Yeah.
So are they, do you think they're not taking it back to their board? I mean, you, you know, obviously, it's been three or four years we've been working on it, so are the superintendents not getting that information back to the boards to talk about?
Well, I, we did, we did, but at the same time, if we don't have board members from other school districts there to take this information back to their board.
That's part of the problem.
That's a big part of the problem.
Or, that's been very good about these tenants, and not everybody has, and so that affects things, too.
And which delays it, which you have to cancel meetings and that, reschedule, all of that, all those sort of things.
Just curious, when do you get paid for?
I don't know, what do I get paid?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that.
I think it's twenty-five bucks.
Well, that's, that's what I thought, we approved the organization meeting at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars.
Yeah. That's why I guess.
Especially when you're farming.
Especially now.
Well, I didn't know about some areas of White, you know, what people don't commit, if they're going to take the position like you're willing to do for us graciously every January. They make that commitment, what they follow through.
Because I think in other school corporations, it's a straw.
And it has been told, that's the stuff.
Or like the newbie gets it.
Several times, the new one gets it. And so. But, no. Because there's not very much continuity from other schools, a lot. Well, that depends on who gets elected, who doesn't come back and stuff like that. So I know at the beginning of next year, there's going to be only three new ones.
So do you honestly feel you've been on a long time, been on board a long time? Do you think it will solve the problem?
I would hope so, let's put that. And then you have to trust your superintendent to bring it back, you still have to get the financial approval for all this stuff.
That's what I was getting at, is they're already doing that. So in the same school corps that's not getting done, you think it's still going to get done? Because if they're not doing it now.
I don't know.
I mean, it, it's pretty obvious to me that they, you know, Mike says they talked about it, and if he's not taking it back to them, what's going to change if they're the only option, they're the board.
How would that work, then, unless they have a major decision like approving a rookie contract for X amount of dollars? Then the superintendents, if that's the way it goes, they vote yes, but they don't vote yes until they come back and we say, go ahead.
We still have to.
We have to.
We still have to. I think that, I think the way the contract's written, though, not the contract, the agreement, the agreement really needs to be overhauled. The whole thing needs to be overhauled, because really, the only thing that's supposed to come back to the boards is the change of the agreement. So in other words, it makes sense that if you have, you know, a multimillion-dollar project and you're doing it, that that board of managers say it is the superintendents that would come back. But really, right now, it does not say any place in agreement that it has to come back. It does not say that. That doesn't mean that's not the right thing to do, but it doesn't say that.
Well, you know, my concern all along is because we're trustees of public money, that we should have thumbs up or down on some of that expenditures.
That's why, we, Chris and I agree that, I mean, the whole thing should be briefed out, but.
I mean, is that something else that you could change in that new amendment? You know, somehow that the superintendent's hard to charge, but then every.
I think you should put a third one in there just for fun.
Because we don't have to have this done until like November. This is just discussion and talk about.
And to go along with that comment, too, if you recall, a few years back, we made a recommendation proposal to change the agreement, some people didn't even vote on it. So if it's not even voted on, then nothing's going to happen with it, you know, it'll just stay the same. That's not, that's not my recommendation, but right now, you don't have to vote on any of these. If you don't vote on them, and, because it was precedent setting last time, because there were some boards that voted on what we did, and some people didn't vote. If you don't have three positive votes, then it's not going to change.
Right.
Is there a possibility, you know, we've looked at over the years, changing, like Mike's saying, the agreement to reflect more accurately how it should be funded overall? Is there a greater opportunity for that to happen with just the superintendents involved?
I, you tell me, Mike. I, I don't know, because it's the same actors that don't want to change it, because it's going to hurt them. Whether it's just a board member.
Because of that, we're, yeah, because in that particular case, it still does, right now, the agreement says it would go back to each board, so. It depends on the board with the agreement.
And that part, it would go back to the board.
For the agreement, yeah, because that's part of the, that's part of the agreement, it's part of the formula right now, so.
It, it probably would have passed last time, but one person was being reelected, or was hoping to, and so he didn't push it. And then he didn't reelect, so that's.
Well, we'll continue to have conversations, and you guys will.
Yeah, anybody want to come to the board meeting next?
Are you going to have the twenty-five?
Loose puppet culvers on the way out. Then I get you those. You can split it out, share it.
All right, you can table that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think obviously. Okay, well, I think, uh, obviously it's something that has to be fixed. And I'm, I'm not sure if it comes from just the board to kind of push the issue to say we gotta get something done or, or what, but.
He's kind of in a tough spot.
Yeah.
He can't be saying this because he's hired by us and takes everybody off and, you know, people wanna say, get out of here.
That's right.
And he's doing a good job, so.
All right, we'll move on. We need, have a recommendation to approve an overnight out of state trip for Southwood Sixth Grade in Chicago, Illinois on March thirteenth. And we might as well just do all the field trips. And then we have a recommendation to approve an overnight out of state trip for Southwood History of Rocks, History of Rock and Roll Class to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in Cleveland, Ohio, October eleventh. And a recommendation to approve overnight extended trip for Sharp Creek Fourth Grade to Camp Tecumseh and Brookston on, uh, October third, third and fourth. And we have a recommendation for those, uh, field trips.
As someone.
Sorry.
All right, uh, motion of second to approve all three of these field trips, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, last one, recommendation to salvage buses seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, and thirty-five.
Yeah, those were just buses that we took out of circulation after the last inspection, so we have no use for them. In the past, we would salvage them and give out twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars a bus.
If you wanna buy one, they.
I was gonna say, that's a terrible key person.
You're the one.
Yeah.
If you can convert that to your trailer or travel trailer. Conversion, conversion.
Conversion.
You got a motion of second to approve that?
We've accepted.
Second.
We got a motion of second to approve the salvaging, those buses seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, and thirty-five, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Three, motion passes. Don't think we have any unfinished business, any board policy? Public comment? Any items from board members? All right, we're here.